Praise for the pledge.
Pledge early to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start, I just want to announce that two of our regular members were unable to attend tonight, and that means that Phyllis will be a voting member for the entire meeting. It also means that instead of a board of seven, we'll have a board of six. But that's because we used to have two alternates, now we only have one. And if anybody's interested in serving as an alternate on the ZBA, they should contact their town council person to discuss it. Okay, for those that are new to the procedures of the zoning board, the meeting is divided into two halves. During the first half, we'll hold public hearings on both new and adjourned applications. We'll hold these hearings in the order in which they're listed on the agenda, and a copy of the agenda is available in that black tray there on our council's desk. For each public hearing, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, to identify themselves, and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. We'll then ask the applicant to give a brief summary of what the application consists of, and then members of the zoning board will have an opportunity to ask questions to clarify issues raised by the application. When the regular board members have finished asking their questions, the floor will be open to anyone from the general public that wishes to address that application. Again, if you wish to speak, you need to be sworn in first. When we've heard from everyone and board members have asked all the questions, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item. When we've completed the items, we'll go back to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase, and during this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public, though you're obviously welcome to stay and listen to the proceedings. Item number one is an adjourned public hearing. Anthony Cuccello, 36 Carmen Drive. Okay, so just state your name for the record.
Anthony Cuccello, 36 Carmen Drive.
And I believe he was sworn in earlier, so I just remind you that you're still under oath.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, you were here two months ago.
Yeah, there was a meeting at the end of August.
And it was adjourned this, at the September meeting?
We didn't have enough time to get enough material together.
Okay. And you've submitted a substantial packet of materials, so I guess without rehearsing everything, if you would just kind of give us the main points?
Sure. The original application was for an 18-foot variance. We've revised that to be a 17-foot, 1-inch variance for the construction of a new garage, which will be 35 inches from the property line. Originally, it was 24 inches.
Okay. I want, before I turn it over to the other board member, I just want to clarify one thing in the packet that you submitted, and that was some architect drawings of the garage that you're proposing to build.
That was a quick view of where the front of the garage would basically be set up or established.
Okay. And so, I mean, there are a couple of things that I just wanted to clarify on this, and that's a major part of the existing garage will be taken down, or will it be entirely demolished?
Okay. On that drawing in front of you, there's a vertical line. That, from that vertical line to the back of the house represents the existing garage.
Mm-hmm.
That stays the way it is. The new garage would be from that vertical line to the front, and so that would be the portion of the variance that's 35 inches.
Okay. But the existing garage has a roof peak here, and it looks like you're flattening out...
I have to show something. We're just trying to show what, where the front of the garage would be. The back, the roof lines and stuff like that, we haven't worked on anything on those lines.
Okay. All right, so, but you have, you've made the garage narrower.
We have not made the garage narrower. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. So there's, instead of a two-foot, it's now going to be, what'd you say, 35 inches?
Yes.
2.9 feet, something like that.
Yes.
Okay.
And with the fence that's installed, there would be 30 inches to pass through.
Okay. Then, the other thing is, one of the things that I liked about the proposed design here is that the new construction will not be any higher than the existing garage peak.
We're looking to keep it at the existing height. It's just fouled up. That is, we're trying to keep the roof line to, you know, to look, with what can be there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
We don't want to go any higher than we need to, the 16 feet.
Well, I mean, one of the things that, quite frankly, I found a little frustrating when your first appearance here, was that a number of members of the board said, "Well, what's the garage going to look like? What do you want it to do?" And you didn't have any real answer to that. You were kind of vague.
I apologize.
A little, okay. And so, one of the things that I'm glad that you've added to the application is at least a preliminary architect drawing.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Christine?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay. Phyllis?
The new garage will match the rest of the house in terms of siding and color and...
Yes.
Okay. And thank you for continuing the markings. That was really helpful to get a visual.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, and I've asked one that was...Larry?
No, no questions.
Tony?
I have no questions.
Carmen?
No, I... I'd just like to say that I really appreciate the fact that it's going to be close to three feet instead of two feet from the property line. I think that was a real concession on your part, and, and the drawings are very, very clear, so that's it for right now.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 36 Carmen Drive? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Nancy Marfo-John, one of the owners of the property. My parents are life, have life use to the property.
Okay.
I was sworn in the last time as well.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll just remind you that you're still under oath, so...
Yes. I just have one question about the drawing, since I haven't actually seen the drawing. My understanding was, when we were here the last time, we were trying to make it so that maybe he did a front-to-back, two-car garage, and that, you know, it still appears that, from what you're saying, that the garage is going to come out in front of it. Maybe he took nine inches off the side instead of, or two point, two feet and nine inches off the side. It's still going to come quite close to the two-bedroom windows that are on the side of the house. Even with the fence there, it's going to come above the fence, and from my understanding, it was going to come out past his house's front face now to where he's got the fence drawn to. Now, I don't know for sure, that's why I'm asking if that's the way it is going to be done.
Okay. My understanding, based on what's been submitted, is that the garage will project in front of the house about five feet.
Okay. Which, where his, if it goes to, and can I address him on that?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. From what I understand, is where the fence came to an end, is that, that's how far in front the garage was going to come to, which might only be five feet in front of the house, but it is quite, it, when you're driving up to it, it looks like a lot. It looks a lot, and like I said again, it is, that garage is going to be right by the two-bedroom windows that are on that side of the house, and it's very, very, I mean, okay, it might say, it's only, it's been moved two more feet over, it's still, you're looking out your bedroom windows, you're looking right onto this, and I just, I mean, it's, I'm against it, and as a property owner, and the reason that there are, you know, codes there, I feel is for a good reason, and I just think that it's going to be too close.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Oh, ma'am.
Or, oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just have one question. I've not been sworn in. My name is Shanna Bogel. My husband is the owner of the residence.
Ms. Bogel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give today was truthful to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, when we met two months ago, my understanding was that Tony was to come up with alternatives as far as the garage. Even at a 17 or even a 16-foot variance is an awful lot to ask an exception. The last meeting, people were here, they were nervous about asking for a two-foot variance, and this gentleman's asking for a 17-foot variance. That's a huge difference. When you're in a neighborhood where everybody is spaced out, that, people look for neighborhoods like that for their children, not just for safety reasons, but for privacy reasons as well. But at the last meeting, the board had asked Tony to come up with alternative ideas, whether the garage was put into the back of the yard so that it wouldn't be so close to the property, or that he have a garage where it's single file, where the cars are parked one in front of the other, so that it's not so close to the property line. And I have to agree with my sister-in-law, we have these rules in place for a reason, for everyone to abide by them. I understand that there's always exceptions to every rule, however, a 17-foot exception is a huge deal. If you're only asking for one or two feet, that's questionable, I understand that, but you're talking 17 feet. These houses are not that far apart to begin with. You're not talking, you know, where each property lot is an acre, and 17 feet is not a big deal. They're not spaced out that way. 17 feet is way too much, and I respectfully ask that the board reconsider, the, the whole point of this meeting was, from what I understood, was for alternatives to be presented, and I've not heard alternatives. One foot, that's not an alternative.
Okay. All right. We will pursue that.
Thank you.
Yes?
Hi, my name is Karen Bogel, and I am the living trust, being the living trust to live in that house on 34 Carmen Drive.
Ms. Bogel, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give today is truthful to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is. I'm just saying, I have lived there 41 years in that house. We had a lot of children living there, we had never had a problem. It would have been nice if Tony had came to us, had talked to us about this. He did not. He went beyond. And just like my daughter and my son said, and now you're, and my daughter and I know now, we're doing a 17 and a half feet. It is still there, the big, tall building will still be there. The fence is up, but it's fine if that's what he wants to do, that is great, but to come in the garage that close to it, and there's a lot of things I could say, but I don't want to. But it's sad that a neighborhood, that there is a problem with a lot of different things right now because of this, and that is a very sad situation. And we will have to live there, and like I said, we've been living there 41 years. We don't like problems, and this has become to that point, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Charlie Arcton, 31 Carmen Drive. I'm right across the street from Tony.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truthful to the best of your knowledge and ability?
I do.
Thank you.
I know I'm not allowed to talk directly to Tony, but I want to make a statement. I do not know why Tony wants to put all this money into this apartment, into his two-car garage, when right now, since the last meeting that he had, he's been shunning all his immediate neighbors and keeping the lights on to distract everybody. This is unfair to the neighbors and unfair to himself and his wife. If he's going to put this money in for his immediate neighbor, against his immediate neighbors, I think he's got to think some other process or get along well with these people, like Mrs. Karen said. He should have communicated to the local neighbors first before having all this hassle. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry I'm late. You want to get here?
Hi, Ms. McCaffrey. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is truthful to the best of your knowledge?
I certainly do. Hi, I'm on 40 Carmen Drive, a few homes down from Tony, and I'm a former realtor as well. And as far as I'm concerned, the code says that our denessy, denessy, is a low deness, you know what I mean?
Density, yes.
Density.
Yes.
And it makes our area a beautiful environmental area, where you come in and you feel like you're in the country, where you're really not, but it's just a lovely place. And put up this huge structure so close to a neighbor, even though it might only be a few feet out of the line, it's very close and very large. And I feel, after being there for 47 years, the matter in which you're going about things is very offensive. I, my children grew up there. I've seen many people come and go. I've become friends with many of them, and it's just so difficult to understand how people can be so disrespectful in the way they go about things. For instance, I'd like to mention, the other day, on Friday, I took pictures to show you guys of his home, where the garage is, and how the structure will look next to his home, how large it would bill, be, and that was on Friday. I had the pictures with me. On Saturday, my mailbox was knocked down, and I don't believe in coincidences. I think it's very disrespectful. That was a $300 mailbox. But if you'll permit me, I'd like to show you these pictures to show where his home is and where the garage will come, how much higher it would be than the fence. It would just be a huge structure in a neighborhood that is so beautiful and clear, that all the grounds are clear and free of these structures. Other people have two-cars garage, but not this close to the neighbors. So if you care to look at these pictures, I'd be happy to show them to you.
Yeah.
Because it's much better than looking at a map. This way, you can see the structure and how beautiful, did you want me to come up and do it? How beautiful the neighborhood is. And this is their home, they have a lovely home. And through the years, there's been many changes. Many of us have put on additions, dormers, other things, buildings beyond our buildings, you know, made a family room, and nothing has disrupt, disrupt anything. Everything was wonderful. I just don't understand why he wants to be so invasive. Doesn't feel right, and I think it's against the code, and it should be denied.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would, I would just say, for general information, that routinely, all of the members of the board go on a field trip to personally, you know, see the properties for each application. This is something we're conscientious about, so, and in this case, most of us, all of us, I think, have made actually more than one trip, so we appreciate the photographs. I don't mean to belittle that, I'm, thank you. But I just wanted to assure people that in every application that we get, we go to some pains to make sure that we're familiar with not just the property, but the surrounding area. Okay, Mr. Cuccello, if you would step back to the microphone. You've, in the, in the packet that you submitted, you, you did look at alternatives.
I did.
So would you just briefly tell us what you discovered in that process?
Sure. In any case, we're going to require a variance for a two-car garage. If the garage is put to the rear of the property line, we would need a side yard as well as a rear yard. That case does not work because of the septic, which I've submitted drawings to. The addition at the rear of the house is not practical for the same reasons. There are standards that I've cited, and I, if anyone has any questions, I can answer that. Those are the main concerns with putting a garage in an alternative location.
Okay, okay. Anybody have any questions along that line? Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Jim, I just wanted to ask Tony if, why you really couldn't consider the garage that would be, you would park the cars in tandem, you know, a longer, a longer garage, and it'd be, it would be just, just one, and it would not be close to the property line.
Okay.
So...
It's not the most convenient thing in the world, but you know, we have a lot of inconveniences.
Right, right.
The project contains two parts. It's an addition and a garage. The addition is going to be where it is based on the septic, which I've already mentioned the drawings. The two-car garage, we need a variance because of the size of the lot.
The specific question from Carmen is, why can't you put the garage, make one long so that it's only one car width wide, but two cars could fit into it? So, in other words, extend it along your driveway as opposed to putting the two cars side by side? It would still be a two-car garage, but her question is, why can't you do a tandem garage as opposed to a side-by-side garage?
Because the addition, we can't fit the addition then, and along the back of the house was where the proposed addition as an alternative was suggested on one of the drawings.
So the existing garage will be converted to an addition?
Yes.
And then the two-car garage is meant to be placed in front of that?
Exactly.
Well...
If he, if you extend it back-to-back, you're going to need to run the front of that garage far past the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, we're going to need a front yard variance at that point, and the side yard.
Right. Okay, okay, so...
Obviously, the field trip, you went down Alda, you went down Kinry. I've shown you several areas of garages and the spacing between houses.
Right.
I've cited variances. I didn't get all of them, but I think we understand the size of the lots and the restrictions that we're faced with here.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Like Noel said, people have put additions on. We're the first family to really live in that house with kids, and we're growing into it.
Okay. No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we...
Obviously, yes.
Stated on the record that you have submitted evidence showing why, you know, an addition in the rear is not feasible.
Correct.
Or, well, I mean, without being, you know, outrageously expensive, moving all of the septic and all of that.
That's just not a feasible thing at all.
Right, right, right. Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there are no recousals? Okay, thank you. Item number two, Richard Dietz, 14 Cardinal Drive. Is anyone here representing Mr. Dietz? Okay, perhaps we'll hear later, so we'll just put that aside and move on. Item number three, Barbara Vasta, 71 Park Avenue.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, how are you?
Okay, just state your name for the record.
My name is Carissa Lee Smythe. I'm representing...
Have a, have a seat, please.
I'm representing Barbara Vasta.
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight is truthful to the best of your knowledge and ability?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So, what brings you here?
Hello. Okay, so, long story short, Barbara Vasta contacted myself and my husband to pretty much rehab and rebuild a porch that was already existing on her home, and upon inspection, we found out that it was not the code, and we told her that. So we instructed her that we would need to rip the existing porch out and build completely new, pour new footings, et cetera. When we filed the building permit, it kind of trickled down to the zoning because it was found that the current porch doesn't have a CO, and the existing side setback is roughly 10 feet or so. We would be building the new porch to that same setback, we just would be bringing it up to code and extending it a little more along the front of her house, no further to the side. So, pretty much, we're just here to do the formalities, I guess.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, you answered the one that I had, and that's the, the existing porch will be demolished.
Yes, in its entirety.
Yeah. And I guess it would be along the left side of the house as you face it. Essentially, the porch will be flush with the house.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not any, it's not a greater encroachment onto the side yard?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. I think the one thing that struck us is you need to put a house number up on that house.
Yes.
On her home.
Yes.
We had a hard time finding it even on like Google Maps. It would bring us all the way down the street. It was very awkward. I'll let her know. We'll do it.
Do everybody a favor, you know? Go to the hardware store and get a seven and a one and nail them up there. It would have really helped.
I'll bring one over tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Is anyone in the audience who wishes to address the application at 71 Park Avenue? Okay, seeing no one, if there are no further questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recused? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Item number four, Emergency One located at 2555 South Road. Okay, if you just, yeah, you can, you can take that. Turn it on and let's see if it works. It sometimes, yeah, it takes a minute to warm up, yeah.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch with MA Day Engineer.
Sorry, Mr. Lynch, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight is truthful to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. We're here for an area variance for the proposed application of the Emergency One. Currently, it's a 0.78 acre site. It's located on the southbound lane of Route Nine. This is the Harbor Drive. Access to the north and to the south, we have the Van Sickleland Drive. Right now, it's currently occupied by approximately 11,000 square foot vacant building located here. The front half, at one time, it was a mattress store. Until the rear, it was an auto body, or an auto repair shop. What we are proposing to do is construct a 6,155 square foot building that would be used as Emergency One, which is a, an urgent care or a walk-in medical facility. Right now, as the code is, it requires 40-foot setbacks for the, the side, the rear and the front. On the existing, we're approximately 2.1 feet off the, the northern property line. What we're doing, we're still need a variance, but we're proposing five feet. So we're lessening that, that variance that's required. Right now, this is an undersized lot for the zone. It's supposed to be two acres, as I mentioned before. We're at the 0.78. So basically, those setbacks really don't work with this, with this property. Basically, that would leave just this area in the center here as part of a developable lot, which it doesn't really work out for that.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
Your hours of operation are going to be what?
I believe that they're like eight to eight, something along those lines.
There's a, a wooden fence there now? Is that going to stay? Will that be modified?
There's, there's a wooden fence that runs along the, the southern property line between that and.
Van Sickleland.
Van Sickleland. We are proposing to put a new fence in there. A new PVC, like a solid screening fence.
Okay. And it's an access and egress right on Route Nine, not off of Van Sickleland?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, I, I understand you're before the planning board.
Correct.
With this. But can you tell me what the northern facade would look like? The, the side of the building that's going to be right adjacent to the Hudson Harbor?
This is basically the, the northern elevation to the, on the top. Basically, if you can see the way that this is laid out, it's going to be one gable going across there and then there's going to be two gables that are cutting across the back. So this is what you'll see from, from the, the harbor, Hudson Harbor.
Okay.
Along here.
Okay. But the, all the entrances are on the southern side?
Correct. There is one access door here, but that's not a main, a main door. Not to talk out of place for the architect, but we do have, there's going to be cultured stone along the bottom, hardy plank and, and some different textures and everything to the, to the building.
Again, I, I, I know this is the, the province of the, of the planning board, but could you tell me along that northern boundary, is there going to be a sidewalk?
No, there's not.
Okay. And I don't, is there one on the other side of the Hudson Harbor Drive? I don't.
There is not.
No, yeah, okay.
You're, you're talking along, along here?
Yeah.
No, no, there's not. Right now, there's some landscaping there. There is a slight grade change. We are, they are proposing, there's an existing sidewalk that goes across the front of the property, which will be, as part of this application, we're going to be bringing that up to the current ADA compliance.
Right.
Which I don't believe it extends down that here, but the sidewalk, I believe, does go north.
Right, okay. The reason I ask is when I was out there, and I, I drove down Hudson Harbor Drive and I noticed there were a couple of people walking along the side of the road and I thought, well, you know, it'd be nice if there were a sidewalk for pedestrians. But again, up to the planning board. Okay. Larry, questions?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Carmen?
How many bays will there be or, you know, to, to park the vehicles?
How many parking spaces?
Yeah.
There's 20, I believe there's 28, I think 25 are required. I think we have two extra.
Okay.
Three extra.
Okay.
And of course, the whole building comes down. I mean, what, the mattress and your, right?
Yeah, that's correct. You can see here it was lightly, you know, superimposed in here, but that whole building's coming down and, and it'll be a brand-new building. We're reducing it, as I said, right now, it's currently approximately 11,000 square feet. We're proposing just over 6,000. The building itself is about a 15% decrease in size and the overall impervious, meaning the, the building, the sidewalks and the parking is about a 20%, 22%.
And what materials will the building be?
There'll be the bottom, there's going to be some cultured stone, some hardy plank material on, I believe on the gables, there's going to be like a board and batten type look to it.
Okay.
It sounds like an improvement. Big time.
Yeah, okay, yes, this, the existing building has been before this board a lot. And so not, not having to deal with that old building is actually, thank you. There any other questions in the board? Anyone in the audience wish to address Emergency One, 2555 South Road? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I, I don't believe anyone new has come, but just in case, item number two, Richard Dietz, 14 Cardinal Drive. No one here to represent. I would move that we adjourn item number two to our November meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda and I'm, I'm assuming we continue right on or is there anyone that wishes a? Okay. All right. That brings us back to item number one, Anthony Cuccello, 36 Carmen Drive. This is a variance to allow the construction of a garage attached to an existing house to be two feet from the side yard lot line where 20 feet is required. I think in, based on the, the testimony, I'm asking the council, can we, can we change this to allow an existing house, a garage attached to an existing house to be 35 inches?
Yes.
Okay, so, and since this is a, a less restrictive, it falls under the, okay. So we're modifying that to 35 inches from the side yard line where 20 feet is required. This is a type-two action, so there's no environmental determinations that need to be made. And, okay. So discussion, comments?
I think the lower roof line in this drawing seems to make it look a little nicer.
Okay.
The way it, if it comes out like that.
I think we might in fact, if, if we choose to adopt this or approve this, add as condition. Since there's still some uncertainty about the exact shape of the garage, that we add as a condition that it, the height can be no more than the existing garage. Okay. I, I think that, I mean, my, you know, as I mentioned, my concern when I first heard about this and then not having any kind of description or drawing of the proposed garage, I was afraid it would be large and kind of looming over. We've had, we've had applications similar to that that we have, we have, we have denied simply because the structure was so large. And I think making sure that this now will not be taller than the, than the existing is, is an improvement. Anything else?
I think that the fence helps the visual. I think that it shields any concerns that the neighbors might have. I don't know what it will do for sound reduction, but I think that it, it allows for privacy on both parties.
Right. And, I mean, that's a, the, the fence was not part of the original application and I should, I'll just note for the record that fences like that are, are allowed by the code by right. So whether or not the fence goes up is not anything that we have any, any authority over. I would also just add for the record that in the packet that was submitted as part of this includes information that speaks to the issue of the impact that this might have on property values. There's a letter from a, a real estate agent. There's also a letter from, from a licensed appraiser, both of which suggest that there will be insignificant impact on property values one way or the other. Let's see. I, I made a list of many of the issues that were raised by people in the neighborhood and we've, we've discussed a number of them here and compared that to the additional information that's been, been submitted and also to the requirements of, of the code. And sorting all of that out, I've, I've tried to condense this into some findings and let me, well, these are kind of rough notes, so you have to bear with me. But if there are things that people want to add or, or, or change, speak up. And so I've, I've organized these along the lines of the, of the questions.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
It's regarding something you already brought up.
Yeah.
Said that the roof line would not be any higher than the existing peak.
Right.
But if I'm looking at these two drawings correctly, the proposed garage, what you're doing is you're bringing the, the height of that roof line up as far as the chimney. And then you're sloping down forward from that, which creates a, I mean, if you just, if you just create, if you just do that, if you just do that drawing, that, I think that brings, I think that brings a forward obstruction of the addition significantly forward in, in, to the, in the house. I don't, I don't know that not creating a higher roof line or making that a, a condition is going to help any because the roof, the, the height of that roof line is at the rear of the house. Now what you're doing is you're moving that maximum height, you know, one quarter back on the home and you're allowing the home to, the, the addition to be sloped down forward. I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's an advantage to anybody. Other, you know, because you're just saying, well, the obstruction can start 15 feet back instead of 40 feet back.
Right, okay. Yeah, no, I.
This is the height. And if you move that height to here.
Right.
Where it is in this drawing.
Yeah.
It goes here. If you just go by that vertical line, if you, and I don't know how tall that is, but if that was the, the height, the, the roof line now, and you drew that peak down, makes a significant difference. It eliminates all of that. So, you know, I mean, you can, we can put that in there, but I don't know that that's a.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's an advantage because of where the peak is now. The peak is so far back in the house, it's irrelevant.
Yeah.
When you move it forward 20 feet, 25 feet, and then you start the down slope from there, I think, I think what you're doing, instead of making a reasonable consideration, I think you're creating an impingement.
For the family.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little.
I'm trying to take everybody's needs into consideration.
Okay. Now, I see, I see what you're trying to achieve.
This is the height.
Yeah.
And that's where it is. And I just did an overlay here. And if you do that, now the height is here. So you've just brought it from the rear of the house all the way to the beginning of the chimney. By doing that and then sloping it down, it's a, you're just, you're moving the obstruction further forward instead of, when, when you're saying it in my mind, if I'm not looking at these drawings, I'm saying, oh, the height of the roof is going to be there and it's going to slope down. But that's not the case. You're going to move the, the height, the highest point of the roof line about 20 feet forward.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got a problem with that.
Well, I would, I, I would like to have some kind of condition that prevents the, the new obstruction to be any higher than the existing. I think that's important. Now, exactly how that gets achieved?
I don't know if we can do it from drawings without architect. I'm, you know, I'm sorry. I know, I know everybody wants to save a little bit of money here, but you know, you want something?
Well.
Want it that bad? Like I said, the last time we had this in front of me, I, I've got two cars that have never seen the inside of a garage. You know, but that's, that's the life and that's the home I chose and I'm very happy.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not infringing my, my views on anybody else, but jeez, I, I just don't get it. I'm sorry.
Don't get what?
I, I don't get. I, I don't get the, the way this plan is drawn out right now, I'm, I, I do not see it as a favor. If that's the height, I don't know. I mean, I, I, this, this is, this is just, it's a drawing. It's not an architectural rendition.
Right, and, and I'm, I'm a little hesitant to get into the, into the design weeds here, because-
Yeah, but we're making that a condition.
Well, I, I think, I think it's, it's a general enough condition that it could be met in a number of different ways, including your suggestion, but, you know, when it comes to figuring out, you know, the size and the length of the roof trusses and things like that-
I'm not talking about roof trusses, I'm talking about visual.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
And I think it's a-
What if we said something along the lines of the peak of the roof couldn't be any further, it could, would have to be no further forward than the middle of that distance?
I'd like to see it before I vote on it. I'm not gonna, I, I'm not that good with imagining that. I need visuals. That's why we take a field trip, and that's why people present us with drawings. You know, I, can't you say, oh yeah, well, if it's pretty much there, it's, looks okay to me? I'm not good with that. I gotta see it, or?
Okay.
Also, what if, you know, when he goes to an architect, and the condition we put on, architect says, I can't do it this way?
Well, um-
The other, the other thing that might have been a little bit helpful on this would have been if there were maybe some measurements here. If we knew, just throwing out numbers, if we knew this was 25 feet, right? I kind of would like to know what the height of this point is, where the vertical is. I'd kind of like to know what the height of that is, because that, if that's an acceptable clearance for the, for the addition, existing garage, whatever it may be, where it meets, where the addition meets, instead of going higher, if that came down from there, right to the front, I think that would make a dramatic difference in the appearance that, that seems to be the concern of the neighbors at this point. I don't, I don't know why the front of the garage, you know, and, I don't know, but if, if I had some, if I saw some measurements attached with this, I think I'd have a better concept of it.
Yeah. The problem here is that we get, we, we would get in, into a kind of a chicken and the egg, you know?
Okay.
I mean, another, another, another condition would be to require that the architect, as part of the final design, consider a plan that would make the front, the, the boundary between the addition and the garage the highest point, and that that point should be no taller than the existing. So that the architect-
Well, the front, the front, if this vertical line represents the front of the existing garage-
Right.
Then that can't be a part of the condition, because it's lower than the peak. The highest, the highest point on this roof-
Okay, but, but say that it could be no higher.
Than the front of the garage?
Right.
So then it would have to slope down from there? I don't, I don't know if that's feasible, given how far out they want to go with that garage.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying that, that one condition would be the limit height, and the second condition would be require that the architect explicitly consider a design that would make the, 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 the point of the garage and the, and the addition the highest point. In other words, that vertical line.
That's going to be the highest point of-
That, that we, that we ask that the architect consider, explicitly consider that as a design, because that would minimize the-
Oh, if he says no, then it's-
The wall.
Then it's a moot point.
Right, but at least we, we, we consider that. Okay, I mean, are we, are Tony and I making sense here?
I, I think we're making sense, I just think we're disagreeing. Not, not on the, not on, maybe, maybe on the application in general, but not so much on what we're saying.
Okay.
I, I think we're maybe disagreeing on the end result.
Okay.
Jim, I, I think Tony really ma, makes a good point here, but the, the neighbors are concerned about size and how it's going to look, and I, I think anything we can, we can do in any conditions, we can do, or if it means hiring an architect.
We, we've spent, we've spent as much time arguing about the fact that a fence that extends past the front of the house exceeds three and a half feet, and here we're talking about an extension to a building extending past the front of the house that looks like it's going to be at least, at its highest point, 10 or 12 feet, and slope down to about seven feet. Because it looks like it's still going to be a foot or two, at least a foot above the fence.
Oh, I see what you-
So let's say that is seven feet, and where it passes the front of the house, it looks like it's probably another three feet. So, you know, I, I've sat here and heard us argue about three and a half versus six feet in front of a house, and, and now we don't seem to be giving the, the entire structure in addition, the same consideration that we give a fence that extends in front of a house. And, and I, I think that's, I think that's wrong.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, let me go, go through a proposed set of findings, and if other things come up, we can, we can, we can talk about it.
We don't have a staff report on this, do we?
No, no. So we have to-
Yeah.
Do it ourselves. Okay. All right. When, when I, when I finish with this, I, I will, I will move that we adopt these as findings, and so. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. Okay. One, A, several properties have two-car garages and/or homes that have sideline, side lot setbacks of less than 20, in some cases, much less. So that the fact that there's a side yard variance is, is actually consistent with the neighborhood. B, the neighborhood consists of single-family homes built in the 1950s, most on lots 75 feet in width. Most had single-car attached garages. The houses tend to be small to moderate in size and located fairly close together. The existing house at 36 Carmen has side yard setbacks currently of 9.6 feet and 9.8 feet on the west and east, respectively. From a visual tour of the neighborhoods, this appears to be typical. In, in other words, most of the existing houses are non-conforming to the current code. The proposed garage will be 2.9 feet or 35 inches from the side lot line. The lower portion of the garage will be screened by an existing six-foot fence. The upper part of the garage will be approximately the same height as the peak of the existing garage. The board finds that the proposed two-car garage will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, because it is consistent with a number of other houses in the neighborhood. The proposed garage will, okay, the proposed garage will reduce the distance between the neighbor, neighboring houses by about 6.8 feet. In other words, the, the existing setback is 9.6. The garage will, will take up 6.8 feet, leaving about 2.8 or 2.9 feet for the, for the setback, which will essentially be between the proposed garage and the fence. But the board does not find that this will be a detriment to neighboring properties. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. The board finds that the applicants have explored all the reasonable alternatives to achieve their goals. The location of the septic system in the backyard makes, in addition to the rear of the house, impossible or prohibitively expensive. The board further notes that, given the narrowness of the lot and the size of the existing house, that any kind of addition, that nearly any kind of addition to the current structure would require a variance of some kind. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The board finds that a 2.8 or 35-inch side yard in a zone that requires 20 feet is substantial. However, when compared with the existing 9.6 side yard setback, the change is less substantial. This change is further mitigated by the screening provided by the installation of a fence. The board further notes that the applicant has modified their proposal to increase the setback. They have also, I can't read my own handwriting here, okay. They have also modified the height of the proposing, they have also limited the height of the proposed garage to be equal or less than the existing garage. This will also mitigate the visual impact on nearby properties. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The board finds that there is no evidence that the proposed garage will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And finally, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. The board finds that the difficulty was self-created, in the sense that the applicant chose to pursue this project. It is not self-created in the sense that the current zoning code imposes requirements that are much more restrictive than when the house and garage were originally built. Okay, any changes, additions, modifications? Okay. Okay, Christine, you want to make the motion here?
Sure, one second. Bear with me one moment. Okay, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Okay. Do we want to add conditions or conditions? Help me here, people.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, we were talking about, about the height, and Tony made some, some points, I mean, is it going to really make a difference if it's in the middle, or, I don't know.
How high is the standard garage?
What'd she say?
It, not, the height of a standard garage, it depends a little bit on how the roof is-
The only provision that I'd like to make on this, that I would see me approving this, is that it doesn't extend past the front of the house. That, pretty much that simple.
The peak.
The, the extent, the garage.
Hmm.
Because, because of the points I said before. Forgetting the height and all of that, all of that, we argue about three and a half feet in front of a house being, or six feet in front of a house being, past the front of the house being-
Yeah.
A question of zone, and here we're, we're, we're putting an extension of a building in front of the house above a six-foot fence. So you probably got the impression that I'm not in favor of this.
Yeah.
Well, and that would probably be the only reason that I would be able to vote for it, is if the extension, it did not move forward past the front of the house. And let me look at plans for that.
Okay.
So I, I, I don't see any, I don't see, I don't see where the height of the roof is going to have any impact on, on the real issue here.
Okay.
At least the issue that's important to me.
Okay. All right, I guess, I guess I have two comments on that. One is that, as I was going around, I noticed there are other garages in the neighborhood.
You know, I, I know that there have been things like this done in the past, it doesn't mean doing it today is the right thing to do.
Point well taken.
Okay, and, you know, I, I didn't sit on a board when those other situations occurred. The laws might have been different when those things happened.
Right.
I'm dealing with today, I'm dealing with a situation that I see before me here and now, and quite frankly, other minutia type of situations that come before this board that seem to get more concerned. And I also listen to the neighbors' concerns, and I think all of these things are very important.
Okay, it would-
I mean, we discussed the color of fences.
Right.
Where I don't think there's anything in, in our town laws that state what color of fence has to be, but, you know, this is, I think, a lot more important than the color of a fence.
How much is, is the proposed garage going to extend?
Five feet. I found the drawing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it comes five feet.
Is it even possible for him to limit it to?
Well, that, I was just going to say, the depth of the, of the proposed garage is 21 feet and eight inches and change. I mean, lopping off five feet would leave you with a garage that would be 16 feet. That's pretty tight.
You know, five feet is, is a, is a small amount. It's a small person, right, lying down? I, I don't, visually, it's not, I guess it's, it's how you view the number.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to allow it as, as proposed. Bring it, it's coming-
That's why, that's why we vote.
A little bit for, yeah, that's, as, as our esteemed committee, but would say that's why there are seven of us.
Well, six tonight.
Okay. Okay, so, do, do we want to add anything to the motion in terms of conditions?
I would like to see drawings from an architect on this, and, and-
Well...
You've closed the public hearing, so if you wanted to get documents that showed an actual, proposed, the actual structure that you wanted to do, the board has the ability to reopen the public hearing, make that request of the applicant, that he submit plans, you know, stamped by an architect, to show the, what it's actually going to look like. And then the board can make a decision on that, or the board can vote tonight. So, you have the opt, but you can always reopen the public hearing since it's the same evening and make that request.
Well...
I'd be more in favor of that than where we stand right now.
Carmen?
I, I, I would really like that. This has been a very difficult case, as we all know. And the neighbors have, have made some logical, have logical concerns. And I did appreciate the fact that, you know, he, he was able to, the distance from the property was increased by about a foot. I appreciate that, but I, I think, I think visually, this is a, a real problem and...
Okay. All right. So...
I would have preferred the, the longer garage.
Larry?
You need your microphone.
A lot of times...
Microphone.
When there are proposals, they submit several renderings of different, different possibilities. So, how are we to know if we require him to submit an architect's rendering, that that's the only possible one?
If there were an architect's rendering that the board viewed favorably, the board could condition the variance on it being built to that rendering.
And I think...
But there might be one we like better that we're not given the option to see. Whereas, a lot of times, we have signs and things, we see, you know, three of them, bigger, smaller, the current size and...
But I think, I think our discussion is a matter of public record, so if you're going to, if, if you're the, the applicant and you're going to go to an architect and you're going to let them know that these are the, that, that the board has concerns, that architect, if he's going to be forthright with his client, he's going to want to know what those concerns are. And all of our concerns, as discussed this evening, or at least some of the concerns that were brought up this evening, are a matter of public record. So, he's going to have access to those concerns. So, you know, the, the idea is to come back with a better proposal, or a more clear proposal other than just really nice drawings.
Okay. I mean, I think that, Christine, is that okay with you?
It's okay.
Phyllis?
I'm, I'm okay to vote on it this evening the way it is. I don't necessarily need architectural drawings.
Okay. Okay. I know, it looks, looks like we're kind of 4-2 on this. So maybe we should reopen the, the public hearing and get some more information on what the garage might look like. That seem reasonable?
I'd, I'd feel more comfortable moving forward with that.
Okay. Okay. So, is there, let me see.
Tony, do you want to make the...
It's, it's our, it's our purpose to be here to be able to grant variances, but I want to be able to vote for something that I'm comfortable with.
Okay.
Not just vote against something.
I, I think, in fact, we...
I don't know if there was a...
The motion was never made.
Christine, I don't believe there was a second on her motion, so I don't know that that motion was formally made, so...
Well, we, we, we got as far as considering putting conditions on this, and it, it would be after that that the motion would be formally made. So, we don't really have a motion on the table. So, let me, I move that the board reopens the public hearing on item number one for the purpose of receiving an architect's drawing or drawings of the proposed garage that would address some, address the issues that have been raised in our discussion concerning the size and shape of the proposed garage.
Mostly the height? The height, the peak of the...
The, the height and the...
I mean, that's, that seems to be the thing that keeps coming up, is the height of the...
Well, actually...
I mean, a two-car garage is a two-car garage.
Yeah. But Tony pointed out is that depending on how the roof goes, the, the mass, the, the area of the new construction can be changed. And, and he suggested a way in which it could, in fact, be somewhat reduced, which reduces the impact, the visual impact.
So, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Has to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah. Reopens it. Okay.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't seconding your motion.
No, no.
So, when do...
Okay.
When do we come back?
So, so this would be back next month?
November 12th.
Is that what it is?
November 12th.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's Veterans Day. Is that, are we going to be meeting?
No.
No.
But I think that's observed on the 12th.
Later in the month again.
So, would it be the 19th?
The 19th.
Okay. All right. So, the motion's to reopen the public hearing on November 19th. Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, do you understand what we're looking for?
I'd like to speak now. I'm here now.
It's not a, it's not a...
Yeah, but the existing, the, the, the public hearing was closed, it's now reopened, but reopened on a, on a date forward.
In essence, it was a motion to adjourn it from, as opposed to closing it, to adjourn it to November 19th.
Right. There were questions while I was sitting there that no one asked.
And the board will take whatever comments you want to submit prior to the next meeting.
Right. Okay. All right. So, item one has been reopened on November 19th. Item number two, Richard Dietz, has been adjourned to November 19th. And I'll ask Sandy to contact Mr. Dietz to, to hopefully make sure that he can make it to the next meeting. Item number three, Barbara Vasta, 71 Park Avenue. This is a variance to allow the construction of a deck to be located 10 feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. Again, this is a, two actions, so there's no environmental issue that needs to be dealt with. Any, any problem here?
Nope.
I think this one is pretty, pretty straightforward.
Going to put a, a number in her house.
Yeah, right.
I'll do that for you.
Okay.
That's the very point.
Let, let me propose the following as, as findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that rebuilding the current deck along the same sideline will produce no change in the existing neighborhood. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, the board finds that, given the fact that the current deck is not up to code and needs to be rebuilt, there's, the, the, replacing and extending the existing deck requires the variance before us. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The board finds that in, in this neighborhood, many of the houses and decks are, do not, do not meet the current zoning requirement of 20 feet. And the, in, in any case, the variance here is not substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance would have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. No, the, there is currently a deck there, and that has not caused any environmental problems. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It was self-created in the sense that the applicant proposes to rebuild the deck. It's not self-created in the sense that the deck has been there for many, many years and is, needs to be replaced. I move those as the findings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Phyllis, do you want to do this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the result, the results of site visits by board members, and the reviews as found, as found one through five by the chair. The approval of this, oh, that's it, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
So moved.
So...
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item number three is approved. Item number four, emergency 1255 South... This is a variance to allow a proposed building to be located five feet from the side property line where 40 feet is required. This is an unlisted action, but...
Mr. Chair, the planning board did its neg deck on September 20th, 2018, so the ZBA doesn't have to do anything secret. And there is a letter from county planning, which is a matter of local concern, but no comments.
Okay. Thank you. That takes care of those two items. And as all of you, I hope, saw, there is a staff report in your packet that reviews the, the application and concludes that the variance should be approved. I think many of us looked at this application and said, "Finally."
Yeah. The idea of having a sidewalk would be wonderful.
Well, I know, I, I have, you can speak to your friendly planning board member, yeah.
That's not our decision.
No, no. Okay. So, I guess, I guess it comes to me. Okay. Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the, the items, what is it, one through, how many? Five?
In the staff.
In the staff report. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Again, I think this is a step in the right direction. The, the, the fact that the encroachment is next to a road and then next to a parking lot means it will have little or no impact on the, on the surrounding area. Okay. If there are no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item number four is approved. Okay. The only remaining item on our agenda is a request from the planning board that they serve as lead agent for the Central Hudson Naps Corner substation. I have the material that the planning board has submitted, and essentially, and Mr. Welty can correct me, this looks like it's going to be the construction of a new substation near the existing one on Spring Road.
Yeah, that's correct. They're looking to, it's the same piece of property, they're looking to build a substation to the north of where the current one is, the neighborhood to the north, and that's in the subject of some discussion at the planning board. We're not sure if this will need a variance, actually, at this point, so it may not come to the ZBA, but we, for the purposes of circulating, we want to make sure that you had the opportunity to consent or, or not.
Okay. I, I think particularly on this one, it makes sense to have the planning board do that. They have staff resources that, that we don't, specifically engineering. So, I move that the ZBA approve the request from the planning board that they serve as lead agency on the Central Hudson Naps Corners Substation proposal.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. That's the end of our agenda. Is we, we hope that Art, who couldn't be here tonight, has a speedy recovery and that we'll see him at the next meeting. Otherwise, if there's not, no further items, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.